UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Pinsky truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Glory forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Supervisor Boone. Please remain standing. Supervisor Stevens?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Stevens. Actually, please remain standing. We'd like to start with a moment of silence today in memory of the people who lost their lives, first of all, in Esparta. It's been a crazy, crazy time here the last several days, and secondly, for all the people who lost their lives in Texas, and a moment of silence for the people of the area near San Antonio and the Guadalupe River. So we'll take 30 seconds if we would. Please be seated. Let's start the meeting. Ask if there's any public comment?
Yes, we have a total of four public comments.
Okay, before the public comment, then I'll read the statement. The members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. So go ahead. Madam Clerk?
Our first public speaker is Pamela Gaskell.
Pamela, so you want to go to the podium that's behind you there, and there's actually a microphone on, a button you can press there. Thank you for coming today Pamela.
Sure. Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of Linda's Cafe on Plumas Street. During the summer stroll, I went by there and sat and had something to eat, and the owner Lori Pack said that nobody came in that day, and she thinks it's because of all the food trucks, and she thought the reason of the summer stroll was so people could get to know our community better, but nobody was going in the businesses. So I said I'd say something.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. We'll note those and we'll share the message back with the city who actually organizes the summer stroll. So we'll let them know. So thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Tina Hessong.
Welcome Tina.
Good afternoon. I would like to invite you to join the new California state election that's being held across the state this weekend. One day paper ballots with results the same day. Yes, it can be done. We will be voting in principle on our new California state constitution. You can preview the document at newcaliforniastate.com, newcaliforniastate.com, and then join us this Saturday, July 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the First United Methodist Church on, at 3101 Colusa Highway here in Uba City. Hope to see you there and hope to see you seeing history in the making. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk?
Our next public speaker is Zachary Hamel.
Hello Zach. Good afternoon Chair and Board Supervisors. I'm Zachary Hamel, the Murch Operations Manager for Sutter County. I'm here today before you because something wasn't agendized, but I wanted to give you two quick updates. First, before your board each year goes to home security grant that you approve each year. This year, I want, the reason why I'm highlighting it is one of our sub recipients was unable to do a purchase, and we are on a tight deadline, so I'm going to be working with the county administrator to accomplish that purchase so we can bring these resources. This specific purchase is some communications resources for cell phones for areas either like during the Sikh parade where the cell towers are under significant load, so we can add capacity, or we can take it to an area of the county to provide cell signal that doesn't normally have it during a disaster. So I'll be working with the county administrator to accomplish that purchase before the end of the month due to our grant deadline, so we're not turning money back to the state. And then secondly, I wanted to highlight something that my office has been working on, and we are constantly working with our local nonprofit organizations. This one specifically is 93Q, and we're, we've, working with county council and developing a MOU to share information with them during a disaster. So essentially, the county would take over the radio station, and that becomes one of our many voices during a disaster, so we can distribute and disseminate good information so people know what to do and where to get accurate, timely information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments Zachary, and we appreciate the work that you do. Further comments?
Our last public speaker is Tony Farley.
Welcome Tony. There's a Tony Farley from Norfolk City, 1290 Wilkood Drive, Norfolk City by Millhouse Hospital by the water treatment plant in Norfolk City, Norfolk City. Today, I hear it's her date, the funny sheriff, the funny sheriff Brandon Barnes for, for National Out in August, National Out. Thank you seriously Zachary Hamel, it's National Out, and also the Back to Future Debbie over here, the 1970s, 80s deputies right here from the Back to the Future. Also Deborah, Deborah says she'll, Deborah says she'll ask kind of council, the council of board to make a certificate appreciation or recognition from our new lottery open up hopefully, hoping Deborah will ask the board to give me a certificate for the open lottery up. And also there's Colonel Scott Hanson, Commissioner Officer in my Marine Corps, and Professor Steve Smith at Harbor King School, Harbor School of Law, and Jeff Boone District 1 nearby Chico, Carmen Baines, Carmen Baines, John Derrick Tractor, Carmen Baines, and also, and also, and also Dan Flores, the, with the force be with you, Darth Vader, and Jeff Stevens nearby Sacramento, Stephen Farmhouse, Salo, and my secret Meyer, my honkers, my honker, honker, honkers people beat Star Haskies, yeah? And Stephanie and Gina, good job, and good, and good job Tina Hassel, good job, good job Veronica from HR, good job Sarah Airport Rios, and good job Dr. Liu, and good job Neil from Caltrans, and good job Sacal B, the Sacal B Media, Sacal Media Market, Sacal B, and good job Bean W guy, and good job as cultural commissioner. Don't forget, don't forget, August National Out, be there and be the funny sheriff. Don't forget Deborah, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you for your comments Tony. We're now going to move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial for which the prior direction has been given to staff and require only routine action of the board. The chair will advise the audience that the matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. We have items 1 through 15 for consent. We're going to pull item number five for discussion. Do we have a motion for items? Well, do we want to discuss item five first, and then we'll do the motion? So if we can have a discussion on item five? Neil, if you can give us a brief overview of the item. I basically pulled it. I have some questions on what, or what we're planning on doing, and then I'd like to have a further discussion on it, if we could do that with the board.
Sure, Honorable Chair and Supervisor. So this matter pertains to essentially home improvement loans that the county has issued dating back to almost like 1996. There's about 28 active loans. This staff report includes some of the history of the program, but there's three loans in question where our department has determined that the loan recipients have passed away, and so consequently, we're trying to determine the best course of action to do, what to do with the outstanding loans. I think as your board may be aware, the department, our department has been the subject of single audit findings regarding the CDBG grant funds, of which, of the 28 active loans, we essentially have documents for 19. And the HCD, which is the state agency in charge of the CDBG program, is requiring us to have the documents, required documents for all of the loans. The required documents are property insurance, flood insurance if needed, and payment of property taxes to the county. So my department sends out up to four letters a year, certified mail, regular mail, to the loan recipients, seeking to collect those documents. Until we collect those documents, ACD, so the single audit will not be satisfied, and the county will be ineligible for CDBG grants. The money that's being, or was used previously for these loans is different from HCD grant funds. So in order to clear the audit finding, we have to clear the loans, and there's two options. One is either to write off the value of the loan. It does not affect the general fund. It affects the previous CDBG loan funds that were allocated, like I say, up to over two decades ago, or we can call the loans due. The issue with the three properties that are listed, and the documents are included in the staff report for the addresses at question, are that it's our understanding that the properties now have different ownership. And so if the county wanted to call them the loans, we would be going to the new property owners and saying that they need to pay the outstanding balances that are specified in the staff report. The, what was supposed to happen is at the time of property exchange through a title company, the county would have been notified, and the county would have had the proceeds of the loan paid out from the escrow funds. For whatever reason that we can't determine, you know, due to, I'm just unfortunately, the number of years that have passed, we're unable to ascertain what happened to the funds, and it seems more than challenging to, to collect the funds. So it was our recommendation to write off these three loans that, like I say, the original recipients have passed away, and then kind of move forward. There's an additional number of loans that my department plans to come before your board with other recommended actions, because we're trying to resolve the single audit findings in the most expedient manner possible. And with that, I'd have to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Sure, to the Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. I have a question too.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I understand that one of the questions, of course, how did it pass through escrow through the title company? But the other question I had, are we going to, do we collect interest or penalties on these, kind of like a property tax?
So thank you Supervisor Boone. So these loans are 30-year deferred payment loans. So essentially, they have a balloon payment after 30 years, and the recipients are not required to pay any, make any loan payments, interest or principal, until the term. So it's extremely challenging, right? And so I believe, you know, the intent of the program was that the department, previous to the, our department taking it over, the regional housing authority was administering the program. So we took it over, and they conveyed all the documents that they had to us, and so we have those. But the requirement of the loan documents is that every recipient is supposed to submit required documents every year to the loan administrator, whether that's the housing authority or the county. So that hasn't been happening, and like I say, what's made it challenging is that we have sent certified mail to all properties, and out of the 28, there's about eight that have returned the documents. There's a number of properties that are not even receiving our certified mail, so they are declining to receive the mail. So what that leads to is that eventually then, by the, the documents that are in this bit, on this staff report, the loans could be termed to be in default, which they, they are then due and payable in full, should the county decide.
Do they have any errors? I mean, I mean, is that an option, or are we just going to go straight to default?
So with these loans, we're recommending that they just be written off. So my department meets with representatives from the HCD, Housing and Community Development from the state, and we've been reviewing, you know, the program, and HCD gave us three options, four options, is that you can either collect the money, you can write the loan off, you can seek to have the new property owners pay the loan balance or assume the loan. And like I say, due to the amount of time that's passed with these loans, we thought it would be, you know, easiest and the fastest way to clear the, like I say, the audit findings is to begin writing off loans that don't have an impact on the general fund, and so, and, you know, it's going to be my recommendation that the county not enter into this loan program any further, right? It's become, you know, quite challenging, and at this point, it's withholding, you know, the Health and Human Services Department from applying and receiving grant funds on other projects. So that's why we're trying to resolve the matter as quickly as possible.
So in other words, if we write this off, we'll be able to come back for the CBD, the grants back again, right? And that's what you're saying?
Not just these three, right?
So this is just three. There's probably, there's going to be about 17 other loans that we need to bring before your board of people that are not receiving our mail and are not submitting the required paperwork. So we're going to come back before your board with the recommendation that we can tell them, your loans are all due and payable in full now, right? We would give 30 days notice and this and that. To go and put a lien on the property will not clear the audit finding, and so...
Just for clarification, the loans are already at the 30-year mark?
No, they're not. No, the, they all have, they were...
So if they're not due, how, just, can you just clarify, because they're not accepting this paperwork, we're not...
Right. So the, the loan documents state that if they do not provide their annual submittal, property insurance, pay their property taxes. There are some properties that are actually on the treasure tax collector's tax sale for this year, because they've not paid their taxes for multiple years. So if they don't pay those things, their loans are in, considered in default, and that's what's in the loan documents. Our intent would be to come before your board, explain all this in another staff report with, you know, different property owners and addresses and loan recipients and the outstanding balance amounts as well, and then seek to notify those people that if they don't provide the necessary documents, we would consider their loans in default.
So now, as far as these properties, we don't have a lien on the properties, or can we do that on any of these? Like, why can't we put a lien? I mean, liens go with the property, right? So...
So I, I believe the, the county's lien rights passed once the loan recipient became deceased. And during the escrow transactions, the new property for, like I say, we don't quite know why, but the county's, the loan, the debt, did not pass on to the subsequent property owner. And it may be a matter of going to a judge and then putting a lien. The challenge with the lien is if we put it on, the, you know, the recipients then would have until the, either until the property sold, or until maybe the term of the loan, but that will preclude the county from passing the single audit and for us being eligible for CDBG grants.
It just seems odd that you can't pass a single audit when the loan's not actually due yet. So I mean, what if at year 30, some of the property owners comes over here and writes you a check for 131,000? I mean, not that's going to happen, but just...
Right.
You know, so it just seems odd that it would go to that without, without being lienable, because usually liens just run with the property, not with the property owner.
Right. The, the issue is...
The paperwork, not the money, right?
So the issue is that, so the residents at these properties are not receiving our mail, and they are not submitting the required documents per the loan. So as I understand it, through the single audit, then our department does not have the paperwork associated with that loan? So the outside auditors will find, make that a finding. And if there's a finding in the single audit, the HCD is notified of that, and then the HCD has notified my department that the county would be ineligible for HCD-provided CDBG grants...
Right.
Until...
I understand that.
Okay.
My thing is like, so if we, let's say today we vote to go ahead and write off this amount of funds, which you said, already said doesn't really impact the general fund. However, it's 200 and something thousand dollars that could come to the bottom line for Sutter County, right? So just, so we write that off, that doesn't cure the audit, because we still have the 17 other properties to deal with. So what kind of timeframe are we talking about to handle those 17 other properties? I mean, are we a year? Are we, you're bringing back next meeting? Or are we, I mean, I'm just wondering, because I don't know how much CDBG either we've lost in the meantime, because we haven't been able to apply over whatever number of years since the audit. Is it just one year, two years? Where are we at here? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what the actual balance is, because, you know, at one point, it's like, okay, lien it, who cares? Let it ride out until we can collect the funds when the property sells? Or does the county front the money, collect the money when the property sells in the future, you know, with some interest, like Mr. Boone mentioned? Or do we go ahead and write it off? But, you know, if we're losing $900,000 tomorrow in CDBG funds or some amount, then it makes sense, like, okay, let's just write this stuff off and move on. But if we haven't lost anything, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
So the funds in question are considered CDBG program income. So if we were to collect those funds, they would come back to the Development Services Department, and they would go in a fund where the program income is kept, and it would be, could then be usable for subsequent similar type loans. It wouldn't go to the general fund, and it, you know, has, you know, specific types of uses. It can be used for certain types of infrastructure, and it can be used for certain types of residential, transitional, even residential improvements that meet CDBG and HCD criteria. The, if we, you know, if your board, yeah, so directs us that you would rather we either pursue a lien or pursue collecting the monies, then our department can go and do that. It's our understanding through HCD then, until these property owners provide the required documents annually, then there will be a finding, and then, on these three properties. On the remaining properties that are in question, yes, we intend to, probably within the next, let's see, that would be two to three board meetings, we would come back before your board with a list of those properties, list of the amount, and the, you know, our recommendation is that we essentially make all the loans payable and due in full, and then we would outline the process. It's like, you know, 30 days notice, we'd have to, you know, the challenge is the property owners aren't receiving our mail, right? So we'll, we'll, we'll send them mail, we'll make them notified. We'd come before your board, and if that so happens, then we would go, and then if they don't pay in 30 days, then the county goes and takes possession of their properties. And, and then we would, you know, pursue the legal action from there, but it's unfortunate that's, in the state side, that's the only way to clear the audit finding.
To the, to the Chair? Yeah, one, one quick question. So these properties, was it ever recorded when these grants were given, so that way it was on file? Because the title company is insured, so maybe we go after the title company. If the title company let that slip through their, their side, and they're insured, they 'd have to cover that cost, I would think, through the...
Oh, yes, the...
I was just going to ask council a question real quick.
Go ahead.
So council, since this was just pulled from the consent for discussion, can we take action on this and then go back to consent, or do we go back to the consent and come back for...
We could do it either way, right?
Yeah, either way. Procedurally, there's no...
My intention is to ask on this particular item...
And then come back.
To, to the Chair, if I may. We have engaged a consulting company, is it Adams Ashby on this, and I don't know if, if we come to a follow-up meeting, if we could ask our consultant to be available, who I think lives in the area, or am I wrong Neil?
I'm not quite sure where he resides. I know his office is in Sacramento, and yeah, he actually contacted us this week. He's...
He's in Uba City.
Okay. He's receiving our files and the information. He's going to go through and make a check of the, the properties and their current status, and we're going to provide some feedback, yeah, certainly to our department, and that's the information that we were waiting on before we brought the, the next list of properties before your board. If you'd like us to withhold the action on this...
So to the Chair?
Yes.
So my request would be to, to not write off these, this collectible amount, and see what we could do to pursue actual filing liens or somewhat, some sort of collections from the folks that, that took the funds.
Okay, so is this a motion on item five?
Chairman, if I could, is it a request to continue this matter for additional information, or is it a motion to deny the request to write off?
Both. I, I would deny the write-off at this point, and then ask for them to bring it back with... it back with, so we could have some kind of action, continuing it with some further action on how we're going to actually pursue either filing liens on these properties or collecting from those that are still outstanding.
So we'll go, if, if you don't mind, Supervisor Vans will call it a continuation, since it's still coming to discussion, instead of straight denial today? Or do you, it's up to you. Is that good?
That's fine.
Okay, so you made a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
Second. Through the chair, though.
A second, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, but with-
Yeah, I know. I agree with my fellow supervisors. I 100% agree. I agree with what Supervisor Boone talked about title company. And I agree with Supervisor Baines. Yes, this is something we brought up when we, through Public Works and Supervisor Stevens and I talked about this. These are loans, they were given. There's got to be some sort of insurance that, that covered this. So we'll do our due diligence. We'll bring it back, you know, the staff will bring it back in the next meeting or second meeting or whatever. But, second.
All right, great. We have a first and a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call vote, please, ma'am? Oh, you have comments? Sorry, Supervisor Stevens?
Can I just ask, what kind of H, what is it, HCD funds are we looking at losing out of? Or what timeframe? Is there any information on that?
Sure. So Sarah Everhart Reels with HHS.
And one more question. Is Sutter County isolated out in this problem? Or do many counties have this problem?
So I'm not sure of what other issues other counties might have. I know our department in working with the Health and Human Services Department, HHS has been denied, been denied a $500,000 grant from HCD. I think that was since 2023. So-
Because of this problem?
Yeah. So this, yeah, the, and the county's ineligible for a HCD grant until the single audit finding is resolved.
But just to clarify, not because of this singular problem?
Because of this exact thing. This is what's holding it up.
If we clear these three loans, we'll be able to go to CDBG?
No, all of the CDBG grants, all of them.
Okay, this is, I just want to clarify because it sounds like the other way. Okay, so, correct. So when we clear this up, we still have the problem, basically?
Right.
Okay. All right.
Through the chair. I have a quick answer to the question about how common this is. I did handle a similar matter in Glen County just this past year. And it's my understanding from researching it for Glen County, that it's happened. These requests for write-offs are, I don't want to say common, but definitely seen throughout the state.
Got it. Seems like a really dumb program, just so I throw it out there. It really does. I mean, it makes no sense at all. So, you know, I'm not surprised, you know, given some of our partners we have. But just, you know, I know it's not through the fault of the county, but it's just the way this is set up is just, just, I know this is on public record, but stupid. So anyway.
So Sarah, so let me, let me finish one more thing. Sarah, so if, if, if we got all this all cleared up, how quickly could we put in for grants? Or is it, is it, is there grants out there that we need right now? Or?
Yes.
So thank you so much, Chairman and members of the board for these questions. So we would need to then reapply in the CDBG state grant cycle for the eligible funds. So we would need to wait for those announced funds. So I would also just offer too, that I am aware from the Health and Human Services perspective, that the audits are very difficult. HCD's requirements are extremely formulaic and there is no flexibility. So that's one of the considerations when you form a CDBG grant application to kind of consider on the county's behalf is how will you be able to document the expenditures of those funds and meet the requirements of the single audit. And so the grant dollars that we were considering under the 23, 22, 23 application were related to a program called Start to Finish, which would have provided some additional funds for residential substance use disorder treatment for folks who are struggling with homelessness. So they put a program kind of constraint on a loan-based project, which is very common, as I understand it, for CDBG funds.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, hopefully we can get this through this sooner than later because as five supervisors, you know, this is something that we just found out about.
Right.
So, and we want, don't want to kick this can down the road any further. Let's get it back here as soon as possible. Get us our information that we're asking so we can make the decision, get through this.
Okay. Any further comments from the board?
Yes, one, one quick one. So-
Supervisor Boone?
My question is, is when these loans were made, I don't know if you're aware or not, Neil, but maybe you have an answer. Were these loans or these grants given, was it recorded? Was it recorded? Because if it was recorded with the county, then it would have to go through escrow. And that would put the title companies at fault.
So it's our understanding, at least from reviewing the loan documents that we have copies of, that they were recorded. And we've also been unable to determine why the title company didn't contact the county at the time. The only thing, which I'm not an expert in, is I, I thought there's a limited term on the extent of title insurance and how long that lasts. And I believe it may have expired for some of these loans because they're so old. But I may be wrong about that. And we can further research that with county council.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think we still have a leg to stand on in that, you know, if they overlooked it, that's their own insurance. And if we just now caught it, that's just the way it goes, I would think. Okay, well, thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor Boone. Any further comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The ayes have it. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for consent calendar items one through 15.
Move to approve.
Five.
Okay. I have a first and a second. Roll call vote again, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Ayes have it. That motion carries for consent. We'll move on now to public hearing.
Public hearing to consider adopting a change to the Sutter County Ordinance Code 1200-060, modifying the speed limit on airport roads, ramps, and within the vicinity of aircraft. We have the full reading. Direct the clerk to read the title only and continue the item to July 22, 2025 for adoption. An adoption of a resolution revising the vehicle security gate schedule for the Sutter County Airport pursuant to Sutter County Ordinance Code Section 1200-010.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. So this item is kind of a cleanup action from previous ordinance that your board considered regarding the rules and regulations of the airport. So with this action, we are looking to set a speed limit within the vicinity of the hangars and on the apron, parking apron of the airport. And then additionally, we are looking to establish the hours at which the main gate to the airport would be open. And speaking with and attending the monthly meetings with the SABRA, the Sutter Buttes Regional Aviation Association, they wanted to make it clear that the main gate would be open during business hours during the week and partly on Saturdays. And then the north gate would be closed. And so that's kind of a cleanup action from a previous staff report and ordinances considered by your board. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. At this point, I'll open a public hearing on this topic. Any public comment? Okay, there being none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the board for any discussion. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor. Well, let's do a roll call vote to you on this one, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The motion carries. We'll move on to item, oh, actually, I'm going to back up on this. If I can ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the County of Sutter amending the Sutter County Ordinance Code Section 1200-060 relating to the prima facie speed limits of the Sutter County Airport.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 17.
Conduct a public hearing for consideration and approval of the fiscal year 2025-26 roadwork plan in the amount of $12,804,834 for proposed expenditures for county road purposes. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the expenditures of the county's allocated share of the road maintenance and rehabilitation account. Funds created by Senate Bill 1 and estimated at $5,504,035.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisor. So this is a presentation on the annual road plan for, that our department presents. So listed in your staff report and on the display is the projected cost that we would spend in this next fiscal year for a variety of bridge replacements, road rehabilitation, and road maintenance projects. And then it includes work that we're also doing in our Trow Bridge yard. We have the columns that list the various types of funds that we would be spending. HBP is the Highway Bridge Program. So those are federal funds. They typically pay 88.53% of the cost of a project. The road fund is the county's road fund, essentially the gas tax that our department and the county receives. We do have a SECA grant that we're administering. SB1 is the gas tax that was passed in 2017. Initially, we were receiving about 3.8, 3.9 million a year. In this coming current fiscal year, we're projected to receive about $4.7 million. If we were to scroll down to the bottom of that column, just so you could see, we have work totaling 5.5 million is what we're estimating. And that's because we have a balance of SB1 funds. So each year we do the road plan, we list projects, we then come before your board, put them out to bid, administer the contracts, and they come in below bid, below our budget. Then we accumulate a balance. So that's the reason why we're going to collect, we believe, around somewhere between 4.5, 4.7 million. And, but we're looking to spend 5.5 million approximately. Once again, these are just budgetary numbers. The next sheet includes... So then as part of this presentation, one, there's a resolution that's specific to the SB1 funds. So that's required annually to be submitted to the state that your board's authorizing to spend for the county and the department to spend the approximately 5.5 million in SB1 funds. Once again, we'll be coming back before your board with every one of those bid packages for your consideration and approval. This is a list of projected roads that we're looking to do pavement work on for '25, '26. It's a kind of a variety of roads that are put on the list because they are spillover roads from previous road plans that had, didn't get completed for a few variety of reasons. We had some weather issues. We've had, we had allocated some work to be done by our road crew and wasn't able to get it done. So we're trying to catch up with this, these road segments. As you mayor, I believe you're aware of the, one of the main uses or where we're allocating our SB1 funds, certainly this year, pardon me, is the Mark Hopkins Culver replacement down in District 5. And then subsequently, next year, it will be the Sanders Road Bridge that, those are two bridge replacements where we set aside the SB1 fund so we can do it. So the planned road pavement maintenance segments are, like I say, are kind of a catch-all to catch up. And then we would come back before with another list, probably in '26, '27, and identify new roads. There's, you know, every year, our department looks at traffic volumes on roadways. We look at what's called the pavement condition index. It's kind of a score. We have about 600 miles of paved two-lane roads, and there's a lot of those lane miles that are in need of repair. So we are, you know, trying to get around to various districts and do some of the work. On this sheet, you'll note that, for example, District 2 doesn't have any listed segments. So District 2 has just under five miles of roadway. And so over the, you know, past number of years, we've done pavement maintenance on those roadways. Some of them, they're primarily Lincoln Road northward and east of Highway 99, State Route 99. We do continue to look at those roads. And, but just to make you aware, that's why I'll say District 2 doesn't show up on this list. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about our road plan.
To the chair.
Supervisor Boone?
Yes, Neil, thank you for your time and efforts. That was, I know it's got to be pretty hard to try to mark everything down. But there were a couple of roads that were overlooked in my district. And I know I took Steve one day with me and we went for a little ride. And a couple of roads that are missing on this is Nevada Street and Schroeder, where we literally had to put two tires in the dirt because we couldn't ride the whole car on the road because it was so rough. So there's approximately, between those two roads alone, there's probably close to 30 homes. And I think to oversee this, to let it pass again another year, I think the last time those roads were touched was around this, in the 70s. And I think we need to really put those back on the list. I don't know how they got taken off. And then one other road was Clark Road, which is a major escape route for Live Oak. Should there be an emergency and the highway would be stopped, people would use township to Clark. And Clark Road is kind of a mess right now. In fact, in front of a previous supervisor, Casey Croon's home, there's a big rut right in the middle of Clark Road. And we've had, we patched it, I know, over this last winter several times. But I think that those three roads need to be addressed. And if we could consider adding those, that would be very appreciative. Thank you.
To the chair?
Before you answer, I'm going to open up the public hearing. So I need to do that first. Can, do you have any public comments? Okay, there being none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go back and you can address Supervisor Boone. Can we have him address Supervisor Boone's comment?
Well, I was going to back him up on this. What I was going to propose is, on the Acacia Street was just a study. And I would rather spend that money, move it over there to your roads. Because it was just a study on the, and we thought about, we weren't doing construction. We didn't want to put the money there. But it was a study that eventually is going to have to be done on the water pipes and so forth going down Acacia.
Okay, let's address Neil on this, on these two issues.
Sure. So I appreciate the feedback about the road segments. And if your board would like, we certainly can amend the, the road list to include those three roads. And I can, you know, bring it back before your board. One of the things that happens with this road plan every year is, I think you could see the original expenditures total for the road plan is about 12.8 million. Like I said, sometimes projects come in below bid. Sometimes, for whatever reasons, we don't get the corresponding federal funds or outside funds, so we don't actually do those projects. So it makes funds available so that we can do other road segments. So definitely with your board's direction, Ken, I've noted those roads and we can add them to the list.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It really means a lot to my constituents.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Yes, Supervisor Stevens, and then Supervisor Vans.
Thank you, Neil, for that information. I know it gets harder and harder probably every year. And I appreciate Jeff's roads. I have, also have many different roads that need work. We all do in every, every district. One question that I would have, as funds get tighter and tighter, how does this compare to last year?
So this road plan is very similar as far as length. What is kind of one of the bigger expenditures is the, the construction cost of the Mark Hopkins Bridge. So we've budgeted about, we could scroll back, maybe that would be helpful. We've budgeted $1.7 million for the Mark Hopkins Bridge. So the, the two potential bridge projects are just going to take a lot of the SB Eligible 1 funds. We budget, just for clarity, we budget about $300,000 a mile to pave a road 24 feet wide and a mile long. Two-lane road, that's our estimate is 300,000. And that includes everything. To do a Cape Seal, we budget 100,000. So, for example, like the Mark Hopkins Bridge could be like 16 miles of county roads otherwise. And so what we're looking to do is get through the two bridge replacement projects. They're been important projects for the county. We've been working through the designs. Now we're getting to the construction. And then we should be able to expand and have a more robust road maintenance plan. In the past years, we would even do a combination. We do an overlay contract, and then we'd also do a Cape Seal contract. And we were averaging anywhere from about eight to 16 miles of pavement maintenance a year. We pick the pavement maintenance based on traffic volumes and the condition of the roadway. So-
I guess what I'm asking, Neil, is how does this compare dollar-wise to last? I know we've got, we're spending more on bridges. But are we, are we having, for the public, are we having to cut down on our road expenses because of our budgetary constraints? Or are we increasing it?
I would say we actually have held about steady. Over the years, we probably have expanded the number of various road projects that we do, not necessarily just- expanded the number of various road projects that we do, not necessarily just pavement maintenance, but there's a lot of other things that are listed in this road plan. Like, for example, this road plan has a placeholder for money to be allocated for culvert replacements, right? Whether done by the county or partnering with other agencies. So we are just trying to diversify how we're spending the money, and that does have an impact on how many miles of pavement get maintained, but we're doing other things, you know, with the money.
But we also, we're fixing culverts, I assume, in prior years, too, so that wasn't part of the...
Prior to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we may have replaced like one culvert a year. It was very, very minimal. For whatever reason, a lot of the culverts that have failed in twenty-two, twenty-three and even coming forward, they all seem to be corrugated metal pipe, and they all seem to be rusting out. We have been working through the approval to replace nine currently culverts. That was, that's not a typical occurrence.
Okay.
And every year now, unfortunately, certainly down in the Robbins Basin, the number of pipes crossings that are failing within the area of Sutter Mutual Water Company, RD fifteen-hundred, we haven't, those are all the original pipes that are somewhere between a fifty to seventy-five year lifespan, and they've, their life, it's ended, right? So they're all failing unfortunately now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
To the Chair. Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Baines.
So I guess I came into office in twenty-twenty-one, and having walked the entire district, there was a lot of complaints. I had a lot of concerns I had for my constituents. In the redistricting, my district only expanded, you know, three times larger than it was, you know, originally, and the requests I've made, whatever, haven't come on this, you know, even for an overlay. And right now, out of the, what's proposed here is, I see that there's one mile of overlay that's gonna be, you know, Lincoln from George Washington Township, and so it was easy for Supervisor Boone to throw a few roads on there or something, that I had to ask if we could have a continuance or something until that our district is, you know, gets the absolute, I know, I know that there's a lot of puddles. I mean, my vehicles, whatever, show for how bad our district is, but, but if there's some way that, that we could bring this thing back, whatever, I've just taken a quick look through, I'm just, two weeks is all I asked. I don't understand if the urgency is, because I heard you loud and clear when you said that the next list will come out in twenty-six, twenty-seven. My constituents have been, you know, constantly, I don't bother you as many times, I understand you're busy and you've got a lot of things to do, but respectfully, I mean, if we could just bring this back in two weeks, I'd appreciate it.
Isn't there a time crunch or issue? Okay.
Yes, to the Chair. The, we can always bring back and add to it, but we really need approval tonight so the resolution could be sent to the state. It's due July first, and staff got an extension. We've sent them the draft, but we really need to send them a final copy. But we can always bring, bring an item back.
So I just ask a question for council. Then, then how, how does that happen? Like, how could somebody support an item expecting it to come back for an amendment that, within the next two weeks, or how does somebody, how does somebody form that or put that in the form of a motion?
Through the Chair.
Is that even possible?
Earlier in the meeting, I had mentioned the Acacia Avenue, the sidewalk, the proposed sidewalk. In Public Works, we talked about pushing that road, that money down the road towards another district who could really use it, because we're not gonna spend the money right now to develop sidewalks. It's not right. It's not fair to the county to do that. So we might as well, that's almost three-hundred thousand dollars if used on a road that really needs it, whether your district or Jeff's district.
Okay, let's, hold on one second. Let's see if, if you can clarify, Council, Supervisor Baines' question, and then we'll address Supervisor Zigamire.
One option is to adopt the resolution as-is and direct staff to bring back an item to consider an amendment to the resolution, if you, if Neil believes that would be accepted by the state.
I guess, yeah, through the Chair and through county councils. So the, the staff report actually includes two recommendations, and recommendation number two is just adoption of a resolution. If you just wanted to approve that resolution, we could submit that to the state because that is specific to the SB one funds. Item number one is the actual road plan that has all the list of roads, and so if you would like to send that back to the department, we'd be happy to modify that and bring that back at a subsequent meeting after further consultation with, you know, each of the supervisors. But the expenditures of the SB one funds is just what we're trying to specify to the state. So I would offer that as a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Before you make a motion, Supervisor Baines, can we address Supervisor Zigamire's concerns? Do you want to go ahead and ask your directive?
No, yeah, I just would like to have that money redirected towards one of the other supervisors' districts. You know, when we meet up, at least take that off this right here, that, we could move that over to when we have these two-two-one meetings.
Okay, so you're recommending amending the proposal?
Amending the proposal and taking out the money allotted for Acacia Street sidewalk.
Okay, is there further discussion regarding that?
Yes, to the Chair. I, I think that's a great idea. I think that when we get ready to go with the pipeline, the water and the sewer in town, that's when we put the, that's the best time to put the sidewalks on. I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent on that, and like I said, with, with those three roads, I don't, I don't know what the exact mileage or how many miles we're gonna, needs to repair, but I think I, I know on Schroder, it was shared probably thirty times on Facebook last year, and, and I'd like to really get those kind of taken care of if we could. So if, if, if Carm, Supervisor Baines, has a road that he has in mind, I think now's the time to bring it to the table, so that way we can make an amendment using those roads.
Okay, just before, before we proceed to the question on an amendment, though, we'd have to be very clear because this needs to get done tonight. So, but go ahead, go ahead, council.
I would say that the language in the resolution does say that the following list of proposed projects, so I do think there is some wiggle room there as far as the adopted projects by the board, that we can submit this resolution to the state, but still bring back an item later to approve the projects.
All right, that sounds like a fair discussion to me.
To the Chair.
Yes.
If I could ask, Neil, what was the reason for the three-hundred thousand at this point? Was there a specific reason that we needed to do it at this time versus holding off on it? Would that cause us any problems?
So the, the line item in question is the number seventeen, the Acacia Avenue sidewalk improvements. So the county's general plan calls for Acacia Avenue to be a, at least a two-lane collector with sidewalks on both sides. In order to do that, the county is required to design the sidewalks. There's a truck yard on Acacia Avenue that is required to put in curb gutter and sidewalk. So the county was looking to design the sidewalk with consideration of the existing PG&E utilities, so that that curb gutter and sidewalk would be put in, and the driveway into that facility would then be required to be widened to the county standard. So I can, the design is not complete. It may be complete enough that we can still have that property owner make those improvements. The, there's another portion of Acacia Avenue that already previously has put in the sidewalk development, but that was the reason for the project. The two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars certainly could be, yes, reallocated as your board sees fit. I guess what I would offer, that if it's easier, one, we could either schedule a, you know, a study session, and I could bring back a list of roads in every district, and we could talk about them and, you know, have an opportunity for every supervisor to provide input, and then I'll bring a finalized road list, you know, in a, in a few months. But if it's possible to submit the resolution with the guidance provided from county council, I think that'd be helpful. It would satisfy, it would, it would satisfy the state. It would secure the money that we're going to be receiving, and then subsequent to future approval by your board of a road list, we would then put that out to bid and accomplish that roadwork.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board, Supervisor Baines?
And I appreciate you bringing, wanting to bring it back, but I don't think we need an extensive workshop or something, or, for me, I think a few years seems too far away. So that's what, that's just my thought. I mean, I was open to, we could turn around and get something on this, the proposed plan here within the next couple of weeks or something, if that was possible, or a month.
So just to clarify, council, so right now, if we adopt this, we can still make changes even within the next couple of weeks if we wanted to, right? Based on, but we'd have to, it'd have to be a public meeting that we all hold to do that, right?
Yes, that's what I would think would require another public hearing. So I do think that we can submit the proposed project list to the state to meet that deadline and still come back to approve those, those projects at a later date.
But Supervisor Baines, you're requesting that you'd like that later date to be much sooner than later, later, right? So is there a date that you would want to set for a work, a public hearing would be the form of a workshop?
So within the, within the month? Like, does that have to be the next two weeks? Is a month from now too soon?
Is that achievable, Neil?
Or Steve, if you want to. Seems like August twelfth, the first meeting in August. Would that be satisfactory?
Okay, then if you'd like to make a motion, Supervisor Baines.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so council, you clear?
Council's clear.
No, so the resolution was passed.
Resolution passed with the caveat that there will be a workshop, workshop held on August twelfth regarding the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No. Is that clear enough? Steve, you had a quizzical look there. Okay, we're good. Okay, does that work, Neil?
Yes, I understand, and at the next meeting, or that, when I bring it back, we can also discuss the project on Acacia.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Baines. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
All right, we got through that. Thank you, Neil. Appreciate it. Now, let's go, move on now to appearance items, and we'll have C O Smith, please.
Thank you. I have no follow-up reports or announcements, other than there was a great fireworks show that went on that I hope folks got to see, but otherwise, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to district reports, and this time, we'll start, start with Supervisor Zigamire.
Um, so last week, we lost an amazing man in our community, Jim Abbott. Jim Abbott was, his father founded SOS here in Yuba City. If any, if you raised animals in Ag, four-H, FFA, you went by there, and he always took the time to listen to you, and that's what it was all about, is teaching these young kids to come out of their shells and just talk. You didn't expect anything, you just, but he was always there to listen. Jim was a great guy. I remember one time I was there with my two girls when they were real little, and he comes out, and he's like, hey, do they like toy animals? I said, what kid doesn't? And he comes back with a bag full of those Schillik little toy horses and stuff, and that made their day. Every time any kid was in there with their parents, he would always give kids candy. He was just a great guy, and it's gonna be really tough walking into that place, not seeing Jim there. Luckily, Greg's still around. Great group over there, so hopefully they're getting through this. Like to close in memory of Jim on behalf of all of us, and then purchase a brick in his honor at the museum. And then, football season's starting up, so I'd like us to send some sort of letter on behalf of all of us to all the sports teams here in the county, saying good luck this year, volleyball, football, to the varsity teams, you know, and we wish them luck in a fun and healthy season. But our Sutter Huskies look really, really good this year. Watched them practice a few times. I'm excited. Really, really good-looking team.
Awesome.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Zigamire. Supervisor Stevens?
I would like to second mics about Jim Abbott. I've known him for pretty much all my life, from when I was a little kid. I can remember going into SOS, and he was just always really nice and always thoughtful and caring about whatever you cared about. And I was just in there a week ago, last Thursday, and was buying ant product to take care of my son's wedding. We were having an ant problems, and he took me around and showed me all kinds of different materials and a little bit more information than I really needed to know. But that's the way Jim was. He was just a fantastic guy, so I would like to also close in his honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Stevens, Supervisor Baines?
Yes, did, did what the fellow supervisor said here, that growing up in the Ag industry, that everybody knew Jim and, you know, supported SOS, but he was a great man for the community, and is gonna be greatly missed. So that, I appreciate the fact that Supervisor Zigamire wants everybody's name attached to that letter of sympathy and condolences that's gonna be sent out to the family. I'd also like to close in memory of the P R S Bungle, William Billy Grove, and Carolyn Robree Cunin. That Ms. Cunin was a substitute teacher of mine when I was a kid, and so their family's been great members of the community and gonna be truly missed. So just ask for letters sent out to those families. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Baines. Supervisor Baines?
Yes, I, and I, too, grew up the same as, as, as most of us here going into SOS. It was the, one of the original orchard farm supplies here in our area, and the best part about Jim was, is no matter what he was doing on his desk, and he walked in, and if you were a farmer in our area, he would drop everything and come right to you and say, hey, what can I do for you? Where you're at, what do you need? I mean, we bought our ladders there, our picking bags, you know, for the peaches. I mean, this is long before even harvesting. We had harvesters, so he was always there, and, and, and I remember quite well a few times going in with my father as like a ten-year-old boy, and, and we're picking up, picking bags, and, and make sure you get paint, son. Grab some paint, because we're gonna mark our name on the bags, right? Because they always ended up missing at the end of the year, but we always had a good laugh about that, and Jim was really something. I mean, he's a gentleman. He's the epitome of a gentleman businessman here in our community, willing to reach out way over a hundred percent, and, and we're definitely at a huge loss. He was the soul of Sutter Orchard Supply, and, and we'd be greatly missed. And on another note, I wanted to give a shout out to Live Oak Little League Softball, ten-to twelve-year-old girls. They won their sections. They're down in, I think, Bakersfield right now, and they're, they're going for the state finals, so they're, they're at the end of it, and I wanted to make sure that, well, let's wait and see if they pull it off. They've been undefeated the whole entire year, except for yesterday, and now they're, they're going against the same team, double elimination, the team that beat them, and, and they gotta win twice, and I think they can pull it off. So a big shout out to them, and then also the ten- and twelve-year-old minor league. They're, they won their sections as well in Live Oak, so big shout out to Live Oak Little League. I spent, I spent twenty-five years coaching and, and being a president for the league and, and vice president, so it means a lot to me to see these kids, because it's a huge step in life when they get to see this, win, lose, or draw. It's, it's a big step up in life, and, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Boone. I, too, would like to add condolences regarding Mr. Abbott. Knew him as well, and sad loss for the community. I also want to add a little bit more, Supervisor Baines mentioned Bill Covey, or Bill Grove, sorry. Bill Grove, who's, he's actually retired undersheriff from Sutter County, and I want to mention that he served the county for thirty-two years and as an undersheriff. He's survived by his wife Debbie and his brother Paul and his nephews, so we want to make sure we give our condolences for a man who served so long in the undersheriff's department for Sutter County. And then Supervisor Baines also mentioned Carolyn Cunin, who was his teacher, which I did not know that, so, but she's actually my brother's mother-in-law, so I've known her for thirty-plus years, and I will just tell you that she's a complete angel. Her celebration of life is tomorrow. One of the most special people I've ever met in my entire life, just a real giver, friendly person. She'll, she's a big loss for our family overall, so thank you for the condolences for Carolyn Cunin. On a positive note, I want to talk to you guys a little bit about an event that Supervisor Stevens and I participated in last week, a trivial, a trivia contest to raise money for charity for Beale Air Force Base. Supervisor Stevens and I were on the same team as council member Boom Garden and council member Pasquale. I want to say we didn't win, but we gave it a really good try. We came in probably around fourth place. We'd say, eh, 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 fourth, yeah. We came in probably around fourth place, we'd say, eh, 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 fourth, yeah, third, fourth place, but, but it was very competitive.
Four teams.
But it was very unfair. It was very, very unfair because, well, there was actually quite a few teams, but it was really unfair because one of the council members is actually a teacher and the questions were all about American history. So it was really tough. And then we, we didn't do very well on the modern music portion of it, so I don't know. Next, I think we have to practice, but they planned to do it again. It was a lot of fun being competitive with the city and even though we lost, we had a good time, right? Okay, so that was good. Let's see, I, I also want to say thank you to Sutter County for the fireworks show. It was, it was amazing show, pulled off a, I know Supervisor Boone had a little bit to do as well with contacting some fireworks company that used to work for him particularly and others worked on it as well, including Councilman Bradford from, from, sorry, from Marysville. And I'll tell you, or sorry, Councilman Hudson, Brad Hudson from Marysville. And it was just a great event to be able to celebrate Independence Day and even in the light of what happened in Espardo, you know, and our hearts and memories go with those families from Espardo as well. But we had over 3,000 people show up to that event on Saturday, so we're like, oh, maybe we should do this on Saturdays more often, but it was pretty amazing, amazing show. And that's pretty much all I have for today. Anything else from the supervisors? So I'll take a motion.
I'm to the chair. Can we purchase a brick as well for Billy Grove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move to approve the call.
Second.
We'll just say, we don't need a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Have a great day. Thank you everybody.
No, we got a closed session.
Oh, closed session now. Go to the closed session. Why do I always miss that?
We have two closed sessions scheduled. The first one is the conference with labor negotiator Veronica Baumgartner, Sutter County General Supervisory Management Confidential and Professional Bargaining Units pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. And the second closed session is evaluation of a public employee, position title county council, county administrator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.B.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.